Okay, let's call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council. 5:00 PM Council Meeting, Tuesday, April 22nd. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Dickinson. Vice Mayor Talamontes. Councilmember Plekibom. Councilmember Maple. Mayor Pro Tem Gara. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Vang. And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
You have a quorum.
We have Councilmember Dickinson lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge.
This is the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Mido Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you, and now if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberative, and just for all.
So we did have a closed session for three items. Madam City Attorney, would you like to report on item number three?
Yes, Mayor, Council met in closed session to discuss an item of pending litigation, and there's nothing to report at this time.
And then, Mr. Mayor, would you like to report out on items one and two?
Yes, will do. On items one and two, the City Council had an initial discussion of the process for conducting evaluations and took no other reportable action.
Thank you. You want to move on to special presentations?
Yes, yes. Okay, we have a busy night today with four special presentations. We'd like to limit them, but they're so important and timely that we wanted to do them all here today. So, the first out of the gate, we want to recognize the McClatchy High School Girls' Basketball Team, who are here in the front row. Yes. So I saw them a few weeks ago. They came to City Hall with a delegation, and they were off to China. And I thought, you know, a few weeks ago, Roger, we had the opportunity to recognize the Grant Boys Football Team, who had an amazing season. I thought, you know what, our Lady Lions here are the section champs and the first team ever out of McClatchy to go on to the open state finals and win a round. And I had a chance to see you in action over there at Golden One Center in the section game, and so impressed by all of you. And we wanted to make sure that we had a chance to celebrate your success. They had a great run, and some scholar athletes as well. I did want to recognize, I don't have everybody written down here, but I know four we wanted to recognize with their achievements and scholarships. We want to recognize Nina Kane, who was, has a full ride scholarship to the University of Washington. Congratulations, Nina. Norrette Lewis has a full ride scholarship to Cal State Northridge. Brianna Kimmons has a full ride basketball and flag football scholarship to Carham College. There may be others, but those are the ones I had on my list here. So, Councilmember Jennings, who represents McClatchy in District 7, also wanted to make sure that we had a chance to celebrate your success. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor, and to the entire City Council and all you who are in our audience, we have an exciting resolution that we want to present to you today. And so I will do the honors of reading the resolution honoring the 2024-25 CK McClatchy High School Lady Lions Basketball Team. So whereas the City of Sacramento proudly recognizes excellence in academics, athletic, and leadership among its youth, and the 2024-25 CK McClatchy High School Ladies Lions Girls Basketball Team exemplified these values both on and off the court. Whereas the Lady Lions achieved historic milestone by winning the CIF SAC Joaquin Section 1 Division Title for the first time since 2007, defeating the top seeded Folsom 64-53 at the Golden One Center. Congratulations, that's incredible achievement. Whereas the team's remarkable 25-7 overall record, including an undefeated 10-0 league performance, was a testament to their exceptional teamwork, their resilience, and their dedication to playing as a team. Whereas the Lady Lions roster featured outstanding group of athletes, and the mayor has named most of them, I'll call the rest of them when we get up to present. Whereas the Lady Lions were guided by an exceptional coaching staff, including head coach Jeff Oda, who has mentored multiple generations of athletes, including current assistants Jessica and Jackie, along with dedicated coaches Carlos and Aaron Perry and Q. I think I'm saying those names right. If I didn't, please correct me later. Whereas the achievement of the Lady Lions during the 2024-25 season has brought immense pride and inspiration to the CK McClatchy High School community, the Sacramento City Unified School District, and the entire city and region of Sacramento. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor and City Council of the City of Sacramento hereby recognize and congratulate 24-25 CK McClatchy High School Lady Lions Girls Basketball Team and coaches and parents and volunteers and student body for their historic season and outstanding contributions to youth sports and leadership here in Sacramento. Congratulations, ladies. So we're going to come down, and I want all of the players, coaches, parents, anybody who wants to be in this team picture, I want you to come up to the front so we can give you your resolution, and we can also acknowledge you with a great picture to remember this in the annals of Sacramento history.
All right, can everyone take two steps in?
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on. You want to go first. I got one. Two, three.
I'm just going to talk about how this section championship was so great. It was so great because I feel like we came together as a team, and we really worked together, and we worked really hard all season. We all came together in the summertime, and we've worked hard since then, and then we worked really hard in the fall. And then when it came crunch, like, to the really big games, we would pray before each game, and we really just showed that we wanted it more than everybody, and it just really worked out for the best. So that's really why. It was a great season.
I think for like all of our seasons, we like all came together as a team, talked after practice, hung out after practice together, seen each other in the hall, talked about the games, and like Bree said, prayed together, like studied our opponents together, and really came together to play. So, yeah.
I'll squat a little bit. Okay. All right. Got it. It's hard being tall sometimes. I would like to first thank Mayor McCarty and council members for inviting us today and recognizing us for this high achievement. I would also like to thank my fellow teammates, my coaches, and also our parents and the rest of everyone that came to the support from our school and student body. This was a very special season, a very special team, and I would just like to congratulate all of us and the amount of work that we input to achieve what we have achieved this year. And I would like to also thank everybody for the unforgettable memories that I personally will carry on with me towards my future. So thank all of you, thank you all for inviting us here today, and go Lions.
Now if somebody told you that you had to stay for the rest of the meeting, they didn't tell you the truth. So your prize, if you want to get going early, you can leave anytime you want to. But congratulations again, ladies and gentlemen, the CK McClatchy High School Ladies Lions Girls Basketball Team!
That last one should be a star in college. Okay, next item, Law Day. City Attorney's Office.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce two of our members of our office, sorry, who happen to also be some of the newest members of the bar. In fact, Carson Vanderlitten, Deputy City Attorney Carson Vanderlitten, was sworn in here in December in chambers by former Mayor Steinberg, and then Cara Weatherby also is one of our newer members of the bar as well. So they're going to present on Law Day today.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. We are here today to accept the Council Resolution recognizing Law Day, May 1st, 2025, in the city of Sacramento. Law Day was originally established by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1958, and in 1961, Congress designated its official date of May 1st. The purpose was then, as it is today, to observe a day of national dedication to the principle of government under law. President Eisenhower sought to highlight and honor for all Americans and for the world the enduring legal culture of the United States. Law Day is the national day set aside to celebrate the rule of law, underscoring how law and the legal process contribute to the freedoms that Americans share, and providing an opportunity to recognize the role of the courts in a constitutional democracy. This year, the American Bar Association has established the Law Day theme, "The Constitution's Promise," out of many, one. Facing the dysfunction and paralysis created by our first governing document, the Articles of Confederation, the framers of the Constitution astutely recognized the need for greater national unification and cooperation. The resulting Constitution, which has been reworked and improved by successive generations of Americans, establishes a framework for government designed to unite us as one citizenry through means such as our representative government, jury service, a regular census, and more. Through our commitment to our union and to our community, the people of Sacramento fulfill the promise of e pluribus unum every day. We come from all backgrounds, identities, classes, and cultures, and yet we recognize the importance of bridging our differences and working together as a free people in a united nation. Our civil lives tie us together as one we, whether through legislative efforts that serve the common good, tireless public service, or taking action every day in ways big and small to improve and uplift our city, state, and country. The "Out of Many, One" Law Day theme encourages all Americans to embody the spirit of solidarity and common purpose. We invite everyone to join us on May 1st, 2025, to celebrate Law Day by recommitting to the values that bind us together. The Sacramento City Attorney's Office will be celebrating Law Day with a speaker presentation featuring Natalie Fujikawa, President of the Women Lawyers of Sacramento, Judge Richard C. Maddich, Sacramento County Superior Court Judge, Professor Vikram D. Amar, Distinguished Professor of Law, UC Davis School of Law, go Aggies, Phoenisha Gaddis, General Counsel of the San Juan Unified School District, Joe Ayala, former Legislative Counsel for the California Legislature, and Professor Larry Levine, Associate Dean for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Professor of Law at the University of the Pacific McGeorge School of Law. The speakers will be discussing current issues relevant to this year's Law Day topic. The doors open at 11:30 AM in historic City Hall chambers with the panel discussion taking place from 12 to 1:00. Refreshments to follow. The activity is pending approval from the State Bar of California for one hour of MCL E general credit. Thank you very much for your time and attention, and we hope to see you on May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Cara Weatherby, and I'm from the City Attorney's Office, City of Sacramento. I won't take up much of your time. I would just like to take a moment to acknowledge our youth contest winners. As you may have heard, in honor of this year's Law Day theme, the City Attorney's Office invited 7th and 8th grade students to celebrate with us by participating in an essay and illustration contest. This was a great opportunity to involve local youth in not only learning about Law Day and the significance of the Constitution and our legal processes, but also doing that in a fun and creative way. We are happy to report that we were overwhelmed by the number and content of the submissions we received. The students really expressed their understanding of the topic creatively with clarity. It was incredibly challenging effort to decide our winners, but we have them, and they're here with us today. In third place, we have Antonia Fideli-McLeod, who is in the 8th grade attending Miwok Middle School in City Council District 4. Antonia wrote a two-page essay and submitted artwork reflecting the diversity of our nation and national symbols, including our flag, the American bald eagle, and the Lady Justice Statue, representing that justice is blind and should be administered without bias regardless of wealth, power, or social status. Antonia's essay connected with the theme of Law Day and current events very well and included a great analysis. I'd like to read an excerpt. "On this Law Day, it is important to appreciate what was established by the founders of the United States in 1787, yet keep up with the Constitution's standards. They have created the framework for a just system of government that respects every person of the United States as equal. For whoever calls his country home, belief in law provides unity that holds us together with the assurance of justice and equality. Out of many, one is a promise made by the authors of the Constitution that continues to be relevant today. But we must agree to sustain the traditions to make certain of a peaceful future. It is up to the current citizens of the U.S. to uphold the belief of equal law and justice for all." Congratulations, Antonia, and I would like to invite you to stand. In second place, Samaya Conger, who is in the 8th grade at Natoma Specific Pathways Prep Middle School in District 1, taught by Ashley Silas. Samaya wrote a poem for her submission. It is creative, inspiring, and compassionate, and gives a visual depiction of the theme in our daily life. In it, Samaya says, "Out of many, one urges us to take pride in our Constitution that has helped bridge our divide. In our military, are individuals of all race who are risking their lives for us to have a safe place. In our government, we have people working hard to protect the citizens by doing their part. At your workplace, you may face adversity, maybe a coworker will take a stand, and you'll appreciate all the diversity. Working together is essential because we go further together. Getting along makes it easier, just like running in warm weather. We are here today as good Samaritans living in unity, and even though we have our disagreements, we are all still a community." Congratulations, Samaya. I'd like to invite you to stand. And in first place, we have Rachel Song. Rachel is in the 8th grade as well. She attends Miwok Middle School in District 4 and is taught by Brian Mitchell. Rachel unanimously won first place by the level of detail and creativity in her submission. Rachel drew a picture with 27 hands relating to the 27 amendments in the Constitution. Each hand tells a very different story. If you look closely, you'll see cultural differences, political differences, occupational differences, social-economic differences, and so much more, but all with one thing in common: we, the people of our nation. Thank you and congratulations, Rachel. And before I leave you today, I would like to say thank you to Callie Trapani and the Community Development Department, Amy Williams in the City Manager's Office, and Katie Hauser and Heather Koff from Youth Parks and Community Enrichment. I would also like to thank the mayor and the Council's Office for helping us get the word out about the contest. Most importantly, I would like to say thank you to all our students, participants. Thank you for showing us that our future is bright. Thank you, Susanna, Mayor and Council, for your time, and the families and the contest winners would like to take a picture with you guys if you would allow.
Ready, one, two, three. Ready, one, two, three.
Should have moved right. Artisza for next week. Okay, next item, please.
The next special presentation is presented by Councilmember Kaplan and Mayor Pro Tem Gara. It's Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll kick it off before I turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem. It is my honor this evening to present, along with the Mayor Pro Tem, recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and then on April 30th is called Denim Day. Every 68 seconds, someone in the United States is sexually assaulted. Approximately 1 in 5 women and 1 in 33 men are raped during their lifetime, and about 75% of harassment victims experience retaliation when they report it. We know between 40 and 45% of women in relationships experiencing domestic abuse are assaulted during the course of their relationship, while over half of the women who are raped by an intimate partner are also sexually assaulted multiple times by that same partner. It is more important today to stand up, to fight, to believe victims, and to acknowledge it, where right now, women are being treated as less than, and where it's being reported we are chattled to bear children, and we don't deserve the equal rights. It's more important that we take the stand and we have supporters, because so often, women have experienced this and said nothing because of the victim shaming and the abuse. Also, International Denim Day, if you have not heard it, has been observed since 1999 as a symbol of protest, because believe it or not, while I was in law school during that time, an Italian High Court decision overturned a sexual assault conviction, saying, "Because the victim wore jeans and they're hard to take off, she obviously consented." So Denim Day encourages everyone to stand in solidarity with survivors of sexual violence and speak up when they hear comments that blame victims because of what they're wearing or how they look. So this evening, we are recognizing several organizations that each, in their own way, commit to standing up and supporting victims of sexual violence and harm. That includes Weave, Cash, My Sister's House, Impact, and the Sacramento Family Regional Justice Center. That does not name them all, but just a couple who are doing the hard work here in Sacramento. And I'd just like to call special attention to Weave. Weave is the Rape Crisis Center for Sacramento County, for the city and the county, and is the only agency that holds the confidential privilege for victims of sexual assault by the nature of their licensing and the training that they have employees go through. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Gara to share a few words before we bring up CEO of Weave, Beth Hassett, to say a couple of words. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kaplan. You know, in California, over 3 million, over 3,250,000 survivors of sexual assault live here today, and it is an issue that happens regularly every day. And it's an important thing that today we recognize this work. I want to thank, you know, many of those in our city itself, our city government and our employees. I then want to thank our Chief of Police, who sits on the Family Justice Center Board of Directors as well. I have the opportunity to sit there with her as well, and with organizations like the Community Against Sexual Harm, Cash, that started by city employees as well here. And again, also to call special attention to Weave, because since 1978, here in Sacramento, Weave began that effort to bring justice, to bring support through the Rape Crisis Center, and now they offer a plethora of services, from therapeutic counseling, legal services, prevention, and housing, and addressing all of the different aspects that lead up to the issues that many sexual assault victims face. I want to just thank everyone for their tireless work and effort that has gone into this. And, you know, and even though 1 in 33 men do experience sexual assault, as Councilmember Kaplan, it's 1 in 5 women that experience that assault. And so today, I stand in solidarity on Denim Day, wearing my denims to City Council. I rarely wear denims to City Council, but very strong in solidarity to bring awareness to this issue every day. And I want to thank, again, Beth Hassett, who's here today. Please come to the podium, because the work that you have done, not only providing life and energy and back and hope to survivors, is critical. So thank you. Big round of applause to our Executive Director, Weave, Beth Hassett.
Thank you all. Weave has served as Sacramento County's Rape Crisis Center since 1988, and every county has a Rape Crisis Center that's charged within a rape. Weave works in partnership with Sac State and the Los Rios College District by embedding sexual assault advocates on campuses to reduce violence and support victims. I'd like to specifically thank Tina and John with the city's Office of Lifetime Economy for partnering with Weave this past year to train bar and nightlife staff to be active bystanders in preventing sexual assault through Weave's Safe Night Out program. We have a training this Thursday, and Alyssa is here from Mango's, who regularly call us and say, hey, we caught somebody who was up to no good. Please show your support by wearing denim on Wednesday, April 30th. You heard the story of Denim Day, and this type of victim blaming is unacceptable, so we'll rally on the Capitol with our legislature, who will also be wearing denim at 10:00 that morning. And again, I want to thank you for shining a light on sexual assault and Weave's work to ensure survivors have a safe place to get support, navigate the criminal legal system, and to heal from the most intimate form of violence. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call everyone up for a picture, all of our organizations that are here, if they wouldn't mind coming up.
My sister's house is over here as well. Come on in.
Jeans, come on down.
Bring your denim.
Yes, I know.
Come on, Leah. Come on, IMPACT's part of it. Come on, y'all's part. Come on.
Hi, it's good to see you.
I know, I know. It's good to see you.
All right, one, two, three.
Can we actually have you three, can we have you three actually go towards more of the middle? Middle, or have one of you guys step over to the other side? Perfect.
All right, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Got it, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Did it from over the microphone? Yeah. Oh, okay. I just come in.
Good to see you.
Okay, and next, we have another special presentation by Councilmember Vang, Autism Acceptance Month.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As you all know, if you didn't know, April is recognized as National Autism Acceptance Month, and it's really a time to go beyond awareness and really have a renewed commitment to inclusion, understanding, and really celebrating neurodiversity in our community. And I actually believe this is the first time ever that the city of Sacramento is actually recognizing Autism Acceptance Month, because usually what we do is we ask the city clerk, you know, do you have a draft of this resolution? And they say, we actually don't have one on record, which means this is actually the first time that we've done this, which is, for me, a little bit disappointing, but really glad that we're doing this. And, you know, this month is also really personal for me as well, as we celebrate Autism Acceptance Month, because I have a nephew and a niece who are autistic, and they both have unique strengths to contribute to this world. It's been an honor of mine to watch them grow, learn, and also navigate the world in their own beautiful ways, right? And it has really taught me as an auntie about creativity, about resilience, and also about patience and humanity. And the reason why this is not an awareness month but is an acceptance month, because awareness acknowledged the existence, but acceptance actually centers, embraces, and really uplifts who they are. And it also means that as a city, as a state, as a country, as a world, that we create spaces where neurodiverse individuals feel seen, valued, and empowered. And so today, I actually want to take an opportunity to thank three incredible organizations that have been doing this work, and sometimes they may not be recognized on the big screen, and you may not hear about them, and I want to make sure that we center them, because they're doing this work every day. They're going to come up here, as I announce you, and would love for you to say a few words before we take a photo. The first is IMPACT, led by Leah. IMPACT actually just recently held their 8th Annual Autism Festival this past weekend, with over 100 attendees, 30-plus vendors, and they work directly with our diverse communities to ensure that our families and our children have what they need to thrive. Autism is just one of many issues. They actually do so many issues, everything from, you know, youth violence, to DV, to gender-based violence, trafficking, so many issues, but this is also another topic of advocacy that they work closely on. The second group I would like to ask to come up is the group that leads, because it's one amazing woman, but she has an incredible team behind her, Valene Bird Azbrell from Artism. Artism is an annual event that occurs in the city of Sacramento, and it is a volunteer-run event. I think many of my colleagues here sponsors the annual event as well, and their event's actually happening this weekend at Luther Burbank, so looking forward to that event. And then lastly, I would love for the Director of the Mine Institute, Dr. Aubin, to come up as well. The Mine Institute, if y'all didn't know, is an institute at UC Davis, but they're actually located right here in Sacramento. And the work they do inform policies and practices to ensure that we shape a region that's more inclusive. And so, you know, the Mine Institute developed more equitable, scientific, validated systems to support intervention, and so really just want to highlight the research component, but also the practitioner on the ground that's uplifting this work. I think that's really important to acknowledge. So with that, I'd love for the three of you to say a few words before we take a quick photo, and really just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing this hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. This is awesome. Thank you so much. This is incredible, and that it's the first one. I did not know that, so that's really good to know. And it's just, you know, bringing awareness to things is one thing, the acceptance piece is another, and it's really important. So those of us that live with this every single day, not just this month, we understand the importance of bringing attention to all the contributions that autistic individuals bring to all of our lives. The truth is, all of us know somebody that's on the spectrum. We may just not know it, but we all do. They're all around us, and they are a very intricate part of our community, and they have contributed so much, and they continue to do that. So it's very important, especially right now, with the time that we're in right now, it's very important that we highlight this. So I thank you so much for highlighting our efforts and everything that we do to bring attention to these things, and inclusivity, you know what I mean? Bringing inclusion into it. That's just wonderful, too. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm just very, very happy to be here to witness this declaration of intent by the city of Sacramento. It is my hope that this encourages our Sacramento officials and their staff and their businesses to follow up with real actions. I just want to emphasize the need for promoting and participating in inclusive practices. Providing these accommodations are important, assisting with the access of these resources and not gatekeeping, and more importantly, educating your communities, the law enforcement, making sure that they understand the autism spectrum and how they can support our individuals. And that's about it. I appreciate you guys. I'm very happy to be here today for this.
Thank you. I want to thank the city of Sacramento, and especially my Vang, for this wonderful honor and for partnering with us to do it. Recognizing Autism Acceptance Month gives us an opportunity to reflect on the contributions of autistic people and their families in the Sacramento community, and it allows us to recognize Sacramento's commitment to advancing inclusion, equity, and acceptance for autistic individuals all the time. This happens in large part because of collaboration across our city with the multiple agencies that are working with these folks. And on behalf of the UC Davis Mine Institute, I want to express our deep gratitude for the recognition's importance of science in shaping a better future for autistic individuals, especially now. By elevating both lived experience and scientific discovery, you help ensure that Sacramento leads the way in evidence-based, inclusive practices that benefit our entire community. Thank you for this recognition, and I look forward to our continuing work together to make Sacramento wonderful for everyone.
Thank you. If you could come to the front, we're going to take a photo. I'm coming, I'm coming. We have, we have three.
Okay. Do y'all want to come up? One more. That's one.
We're moving along to the consent calendar, so council members, who would like to comment on what? Councilmember Dickinson?
Item number seven, Madam Vice Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Gara?
Item number five and eight.
Five and eight. Councilmember Maple? Dana? Okay. We'll start with, actually, Clerk, is there any comments on consent calendar?
Yes, I have six speakers. Would you like to take those now?
Yeah, actually, we'll do council comments first, and then we'll do speakers.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will start with item five, Councilmember Gara, and then Councilmember Maple on item five.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank staff and also the folks at the California Energy Commission for this grant here. This will allow us to increase our EV charging accessibility throughout our city, particularly serving the South area. We're going to have at Georgetown Community Center, at Tahoe Park, and also the Oak Park Community Center, and so we're making sure that it's not only accessible downtown, but also throughout the area, but for our District 5 and 6 here. Very grateful, and this is part of the Sacramento Electric Vehicle Blueprint grant, that's looking at how do we make sure that we have reliable and available charging for folks throughout the city. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Maple, item five.
Ditto. Same exact comments, but just want to add one small additional thing, just that as an EV owner myself, living in South Sacramento, it's really challenging to find the infrastructure that you need, and we know that having the infrastructure is what's going to help especially our families, low-income families, be able to adopt EVs into their lives, and so the more that we can do to create that is a good thing, and so I'd just love to see this at Oak Park and beyond, and looking forward to its expansions, and really want to thank the staff. Thank you.
And then Councilmember Dickinson on item seven.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I wanted to make a couple comments about item seven, which I am very excited to see here before us for acceptance, a resolution accepting federal grant and moving to the next stages of implementing this. This began quite some time ago, led by Jennifer Dolan Wyatt of our transportation staff, and Jennifer is here this evening, and other members of her staff. I think it started in 2023. Is that, give me a nod, yes, and when the question was whether or not to apply for a federal grant under the Federal Bipartisan Infrastructure Investment Act, under the category of reconnecting communities, communities that had been historically separated by freeways and other major roadways, and had sacrificed some of their identity and lost some of the assets that they otherwise had built community strength and resilience around. We had several community meetings so that the staff could gauge the community's interest in pursuing this grant, and I think the response was overwhelming to proceed with that. And fortunately, this was a grant application we were successful with, and so here we are tonight. The essence of this, and this is perhaps the most fun thing you do many times in life, is reimagine the world, and we're going to reimagine this little corner of the world that is dominated by State Route 160 as a freeway, which was extended from downtown across the American River to what we now call Business 80, and it had the effect of separating North Sacramento from one of the principal assets of our region, the American River Parkway. It also separated the neighborhoods on the north side of Highway 160 from those that were developing both business and commercial areas on the south side. It's had a number of effects that I don't imagine anyone in 1955, when Highway 160 was first built, could ever have foreseen would have occurred over time. So notwithstanding the community input to this point, this grant is a planning grant, it's a start, and so there'll be a significant component of additional community input. It goes as far north as El Camino Avenue within its scope, from North Gate Boulevard. I know the Vice Mayor's going to have an interest in this as well, to Business 80, as I mentioned previously, and I think it has great potential to allow us to see how we can create better connections to Del Paso Boulevard, how we can provide more routes and safer routes in all times for people who live in garden land in North Gate, how it can help us realize pedestrian and cyclist access, among others, to the American River Parkway that I mentioned earlier, which is very difficult and not very safe. Today, there are a host of potential benefits to this. I apologize for going on a little long about this, but maybe you can sense that this, to me, represents a huge opportunity and part of the investment we're making in North Sacramento. So I'm just delighted. I know there's some people here who want to add comments. There's going to be a lot of conversation about it, what it should look like. That's as it should be, and my only proviso here is to ask Jennifer to go faster. She's heard this from me before, probably from the others here, too, and she'll keep hearing it, because we are energized, excited, and motivated to get on with the work. So thank you, Vice Mayor.
100% agree with your comments, and Councilmember Maple?
I just really wanted to quickly add and support my colleague, Councilmember Dickinson, but just add just a little bit of historical context. I remember when I first came into office, being briefed on the possibility of the city applying for this grant, and of course, being the good council member that I am, I wanted to advocate for my own communities, no offense. communities, no offense, because I thought there were some great examples, including Highway 99, and, and how both Curtis Park and Oak Park were separated by that, by that freeway. But through that briefing, I was educated with the expertise of our staff on, on really the background and the history of the 160, and how that really has impacted the community members and the businesses and just everything in that area. And I walked away very convinced that that would be the most successful application, and it was, right? And so, I think that really just goes to show the work of, of our incredible team here. And so, I was convinced from that moment on, and so, really happy to, to support this and help move it forward, and both in the planning stages and everything that comes beyond it. So, it's a great, great program. Thank you.
Well said. And Councilmember Gera on item eight?
Great, thank you. You know, very briefly, because this is just passed for publication, but I did have some questions from my neighborhood. And one, I'm very excited about this item. It's recognizing San Francisco Boulevard as a historic landmark for our city. For anyone who looks at any of all, all of our photos, there's some great photos of the palm tree-lined streets there, back when we had the streetcar going there. And, and, and boy, did, what a, what a tragic mistake of pulling out the streetcar. And so, you know, I still have my, my neighbor across the street, Carol, she would remind me of when she was a kid, how they could take the streetcar from 21st Avenue, and then they would go down Stockton Boulevard. But the original link went up to San Francisco Boulevard through that Palm Line Street. And those are the original suburbs of, of Sacramento, was the, the unincorporated area of Colonial Heights in that area. So, very excited about this work here, and, and looking forward to this getting across the finish line. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Wonderful. And then for myself, on item 11, congratulations, Juan Novello, on Measure U appointment by the mayor. Congratulations. Okay, so now, we would do public comment, and then eventually we'll need a motion in a second, because that was made.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have the six speakers. The first is McWorthy, second is John Fiero, then Jeffrey, Christina Rogers, Matt King, and Rick Stevenson.
We're still wondering who transportation. Now, here's a guy stood here for 10 minutes and talked about Safe Hall Transportation. Now, you put transportation on, you know. Do you have constituents that you encourage on how they come here and speak? That's your constituent. You don't, because you're ignorant to the fact that you want to be the person to do it all, you damn self. You can't. Deal with just some of these people that have been here for years. Transportation is the worst transportation in America, right here in Sacramento. Safe Hall talked about it. I just learned today Safe Hall involved in the redevelopment. I had a friend on the commission when all that money first came here to Old Sacramento. But what did Old Sacramento do here? You know, it's a crime. What did K Street do? I saw it changed triple time. Crime, crime. And here you say transportation. You can't go across time, across this city on a schedule. That's transportation. You can't. You went and let the, the mayor switch the education, and kids come here and say, well, they couldn't get to school if it wasn't for mass transportation. When the hell could come the yellow buses? See, you're ignorant with money. See, that's the thing about it. You're ignorant with money. Go to somebody that is expert in dealing with money, and expert within here to there. Have you ever spoke to a man that, a woman that do a route for a truck? Well, the woman's a close friend of mine, right here. And I want to get to Sunrise where they go, to wind and wait. Traffic the hell everywhere else. But you understand, you all know one way from home. And a woman from the big California city, right here on the street was killed.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is John Fiero on item seven.
What did you say? Hi, I'm John Fiero. I'm Woodlake resident, been there for 40 years. I'm about item seven. I love this idea. It's been a long time in coming. We need to join 160 and get the bicycle trail accessible to Woodlake. We, our newest projects you just approved in Woodlake were a 70-story, 700-year apartment building and a Quickie Mart. They're less than a half a mile apart. There's not a single sidewalk in between the two. So, Woodlake needs a lot of attention, and we need to get some attention now because of this building. I don't know if we can wait. I, I hope that traffic can move fast and get us some approvals. But Woodlake, as you know, is an old English sort of setting with no sidewalks, real narrow streets, and this building is affecting us really badly now. There's no sidewalks. They're, they, from the building to the Quickie Mart, not a single sidewalk. Around our house, there's no sidewalks, and they want to allow this building to go in, they want to handle the parking after the building's in. We don't need 700 more stakeholders voting to keep parking when we're trying to re-regulate it now. They've done regulation of the parking in, in Woodlake to some extent, for the Stony Inn, where they have no overnight parking. That's our basic thing. We want no overnight parking. This building was created under the idea that they had plenty of parking, there was going to be plenty of facilities for all the, all the tenants of the building. They won't be parking on our streets, and everything's going to be fine. Well, it's manifesting totally different now. We have, if you, if you're going to go to the Police Memorial next week, you'll, you'll get an idea how big and oppressive this building is. We're less than 150 feet away from it, and it's, we're at their front door. So, it's like, we, the two of us live on one side, 700 people live across the street. We want to handle the parking and get this issue done before. The Safe Street Money may help us. This Highway 160 study may say, yes, you do have a problem. You need sidewalks, you need to regulate parking to one side of the street or the other. But we need to know that now before the building's occupied. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jeffrey on item seven?
Jeff Tardaglia, an advocate. This will be the third meeting today, so what this one was about, and I was going to skip it, except for your news reporters told me that this was happening today. Some of these activities like this, I hope Barbara, you inform her further what's going on in this regard, because I know how much she has been concerned about the Old Sacramento. I remember 40 years ago, coming up from Sacramento, coming up from Los Angeles, with, visiting with friends and some of the active groups that took place on Del Paso Boulevard, and the songs and everything else that were going on there in active places. For a long time, that has been really a desert. So, Roger, I appreciate you going ahead and getting this area brought up and brought into life. As you know, there's really no bus service in that regard. It's, everything's dependent upon light rail until you get to the Arden Del Paso Light Rail Station. That was a decision made some years ago to remove the 15, so you do not have that. So, I hope you make sure that the connection of public transportation in regards to 160 is considered. And since you are, are on the RT Board, I hope that key gets brought up soon. That's my comment on item seven through now. I'll speak later.
Thank you for your comments. Christina Rogers on item 10. And then I have two more speakers also on item 10, Matt King and Rick Stevenson.
Good evening, City Council. Tonight, I represent the Land Park Community Association as their president. And having listened to my neighbors, it is clear that they do not want you to cut core services like city parks. Previous cuts have eroded public safety and quality of life in every city park, including Williamland Regional Park. On Easter weekend, this last weekend, families from all over Sacramento celebrated in a land park. Several reckless drivers were speeding and doing sideshow-type moves near them. And not only that, but the decibel levels from vehicles were so loud, windows rattled at homes and nearby, and those enjoying their own gatherings in the park were disturbed. We need more park rangers to patrol the area and remind people to be respectful and behave appropriately. But with only 12 park rangers for over 240 parks and bike trails, that's impossible. We understand the city of Sacramento is 44 million in debt and needs to generate more revenue. We suggest you invest in core services instead of cut. For example, many of the thousands of weekly visitors to Williamland Park don't pay permits. The city loses revenue every week because of it. Upgrading and permitting process can generate valuable revenue, and it may even pay for some more park rangers. Please focus on cuts to nonessential areas. It may be a challenge. Some groups may have gotten used to receiving city funds, but you just don't have it right now. And our parks serve everyone, so they are an inclusive investment. We love Sacramento. Many of us have lived here for generations. Sacramento has a new mayor and city council, and we support efforts towards smart governance, wise spending, and thoughtful investing moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Matt King?
Good evening, Council.
Sure, we, yeah, those mics. Let me restart your time, please.
Good evening, Council. Thanks for having me. I'm Matt King. And, you know, we had a lot of kids in here that, you know, grew up in sports, and a lot of them have the opportunity to play these sports in our parks, whether it be Little League, whether it be basketball, soccer, football. Our parks are valuable pieces of real estate that we have here. And I agree with her, there, you really shouldn't try to cut the parks budget as little as possible. It's one of our core services. And without parks, people that don't have a lot and don't have the money to go other places, like the mall, or the movies, or whatever, they're not going to have anything to do, because they won't feel safe in their own neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Rick Stevenson is our final speaker on the consent calendar, also item 10.
Williamland Park, when the Great Recession hit in 2008, became so overgrown that we had to start a neighborhood organization, which is still going. Starting the 15th year, Councilman Jennings has been to many of our park workdays. We usually have 100 people or more at them. But the problem is, when you, when you think about budgets, a lot of departments of the city can increase one year, decrease another. Frankly, it's not desirable. What, when you have neglect in parks, the damage lasts, one year's worth of damage can last 10 years or 15 years to recover because of trees and plants. So, the, the recovery time is something, when you think of budgetary things, please keep that in mind. And don't, you know, and again, Williamland Park depends heavily on volunteers, because we used to have 17 staff members, full-time, and now we're down to just a few. And it's the neighbors that had to jump in and pick up a lot of it. And again, we've been doing it for 15 years, and we'll continue. But remember, one year of neglect can mean 10 years of ketchup. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar. Councilmember Dickinson?
I'll move the consent calendar, Vice Mayor. And I just neglected, I wanted to also mention that the Woodlake Neighborhood Association had expressed their support on the grant we were talking about earlier. And, and we saw James Corliss here this afternoon, but SAICOG staff deserves a little recognition, too, because they really helped move the, the grant package through the, the federal and state agencies to get it signed in a timely way, too. So, I, I wanted not to overlook them.
Wonderful. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dickinson, a second by Councilmember Maple. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan? Councilmember Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckebom is absent. Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Mayor McCarty is absent. And Vice Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
You, you have motion passes.
Thank you. And now, we're moving along to the discussion calendar, item number 12. Want to welcome our city auditor, Farishta.
Good evening. Are we just waiting for the presentation? There you go. All right, good evening, Vice Mayor Telemontes, and members of the city council. I'm Farishta Arari, your city auditor. The recommendation that is before you today is to pass a motion approving the city auditor's fiscal year 2526 work plan. The Office of the City Auditor plays a vital role in ensuring public accountability and transparency in municipal operations. As an independent body, the Office of the City Auditor provides objective and reliable assessments of the city's ability to achieve its goals and maintain an effective system of internal controls. My office has three divisions focused on our main areas of work, performance audits, research analysis, and whistleblower hotline. To develop my work plan this year, I met with city leadership, including the city manager's office and department directors, and conducted a citywide risk assessment that have reviewed various available data to identify the areas of highest risk in the city. In addition, due to the current financial situation of the city, I wanted to focus my work plan on projects that could identify efficiencies, cost savings, or potential revenue increases. As I reported last year, our office has dealt with some vacancies during this fiscal year, which has limited our ability to complete all of our anticipated projects. We have been working on filling our vacancies, and we're now down to one vacant position, the principal fiscal policy analyst position that oversees the performance audits division. We have been working to complete existing audits and anticipate completing quite a few before the end of this fiscal year. However, as you know, freezing the principal position is one of the strategies that are on the table to balance the fiscal year 26 budget. If this strategy is selected by the city council, it would impact this proposed work plan. In our performance audit division, we currently have six audits in progress, including a couple that have been on hold as we work to staff up the department. We anticipate four of these projects will be completed prior to the end of this fiscal year. The audit of the Animal Care Services Division was just completed and presented to the Budget and Audit Committee this, today. We also anticipate completing the audit of the Emergency Medical Services, Part One of the Homeless Response Audit, and audit of the military equipment use policies and inventory practices. We will resume the Evidence and Property Division audit once the military equipment audit is completed. For our planned audits, we have the second homeless response audit. I have been in discussions with the mayor on the objectives of the second audit, and I will be bringing forward to the Budget and Audit Committee details on the scope and objective of this audit next month. I will then bring it to the full city council for approval shortly afterwards. This will ensure that the objective of that second audit will address the, the new city council's highest priority homelessness issues. For our planned audits, we have the pedestrian safety audit that was rolled over from our prior year work plan. We have added three additional projects for the upcoming work plan, the audit of the code compliance night team, the audit of the city's radio systems, and an audit of special permits, special event permitting process. I selected these projects as I believe that there are some efficiencies and cost savings the city can realize in these areas. I do want to note that this proposed work plan is the one that was approved by the Budget and Audit Committee last month, and so, it does not include the recent request from Councilmember Vang to add an audit of the Police Department overtime practices. I can bring that proposal to the Budget and Audit Committee for deliberation if the city council doesn't take up that request tonight. As I previously mentioned, we had a couple of audits on hold from last year. I saw guidance from the Budget and Audit Committee on the prioritization of either resuming the complaint investigation and resolution practices audit, or initiating the audit of pedestrian safety after we complete some of our current projects. The direction from Budget and Audit was to resume and complete the complaint investigation and resolution practices audit, and I just want to confirm that the city council agrees with this direction. I do anticipate that I'll be bringing forward a more detailed scope and objective for this audit to the Budget and Audit Committee shortly. In September of last year, we were able to finally fill the cannabis auditor vacancy in our office. As we discussed last year, the cannabis auditor position has been reduced to a half FTE working on cannabis, and the other half assisting with the offices, Measure L, and other projects. The first few months of the cannabis auditor's work was spent working on the charter mandated Children's Fund baseline funding verification report, and we have now started our ongoing monitoring of a variety of cannabis-related activities. In our discussions with the city manager and cannabis offices, we identified a project that could potentially help streamline the permitting and regulating of cannabis businesses. This project would compare the cannabis laws governing cannabis businesses by the state and the city to identify any regulatory overlap in code, code provisions, enforcement mechanisms, and administrative activities. This would identify opportunities to streamline the city's cannabis regulation. We believe this project should be the next project to conduct and have listed it before the illegal cannabis cultivation audit that has been rolled over. the illegal cannabis cultivation audit that has been rolled over from the prior year's work plan. We also anticipate contracting out the Measure L required audit of cannabis business operations tax for the Sacramento Children's Fund with the city's external financial statement auditors. Our office also has a designated utilities auditor that's funded by the three utilities funds. We're currently working on an audit of the department's energy use that will evaluate the feasibility of DOU operations moving to 100% electric. Other utilities audits and special projects we plan to conduct include a series of audits regarding physical security and then another storm drainage fund review as requested by the Department of Utilities. Next, we move to our research and analysis work plan. We just completed and presented the audit of the Ethics Commission to the Budget and Audit Committee today, and we plan to bring it to the council shortly. In addition, due to staffing turnover, we had to put the audit of transient occupancy tax on hold last year. We were able to fill that vacancy in this division in January, and we have resumed work on this audit. In addition, we have started a project to explore entering into contingency contracts with a vendor to conduct audits to recover potential past taxes or other revenue owed to the city that were not properly attributed or paid to the city. We're currently working on an RFP for this project, and we'll determine the feasibility of that once the RFP are received. We have also added a project of the business operations tax to evaluate the city's BOT and benchmark with other cities to identify any areas to consider updating. On our research and analysis side, we have a number of recurring reports planned. Measure L also mandated our office to annually verify that the baseline funding amount, which we calculated in December of 2023, for the Sacramento Children's Fund was expended in each previous fiscal year. In addition, last year, the council approved changing the frequency of the community survey from being done annually to a biannual survey. We did not conduct the survey this fiscal year, and we're due to conduct it in fiscal year '26. However, this is also one of the budget reduction strategies for fiscal year 2026. So if the council selects this strategy to balance the budget, this project would not be conducted in fiscal year '26. And then we also have a couple of diversity projects that we rotate each year. Finally, our office operates the whistleblower hotline. As of January 1st, 2025, we had 23 tips open, and we anticipate receiving about 160 tips each fiscal year. This is an increase from prior year's estimate of 140, as we have experienced an increase in the number of tips this fiscal year. Increases in the whistleblower hotline activity reduces staff time available to conduct our other audits and projects, as we don't have dedicated staff for the whistleblower hotline, and all office staff take on cases. This last page discusses our selection process for the work plan and our office's authority. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take public comment first, and then we'll do council member questions and move over the conversation. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have three speakers, Mac Worthy, Keon Bliss, then Jeffrey Tardagia.
Yeah. We wonder why these audits are at different meetings. Wait a minute. You done, today's audit, what today's audit you done, I want a rough copy of that if I have a legal right to have it. Because now what we see here in this proposal here is a whistleblower, but we didn't see a whistleblower on what she, the report she made at the earlier meeting. Wow, that's what we want to ask. She got a lot of things in that report today, earlier, that some legality got to be applied to it. Because somebody is breaking the brown hat and not telling the people the truth out here. So we're going to get some out of that audit. We want the hard copy of it, and we will study that. And we will study what she doing now, and you done well today on the earlier. But there's some things there that the public going to have to be in on what you audit, and we got to have some rough drafts of what is put in that audit, especially when we got a whistleblower status in here. All I'm trying to do is to get the corruption out of here. Because this city ain't going to move forward if we don't get the corruption. We can use that information to eliminate the corruption, and you might want to face it. Because the people continue cooperating with me, we will get you on oath, and we will know where's the money going and why they go out the way they go out.
Next speaker is Keon Bliss.
City Council, I can't think of a more important use of the city auditor's time right now going into a budget cycle where we are facing continuing deficits and years of projected budget shortfalls going forward that may require us to do layoffs than to look at the efficient and appropriate use of overtime practices here in the city, particularly within the police department. As you all should already be aware, through the Community Police Review Commission's annual report, there have been a number of discrepancies that have been brought up regarding how the, how the police department is using overtime, namely in, which has amounted to about $158 million since just 2011. And there are a number of officers, despite the vacancies, only a few dozen seem to be making excessive amounts of overtime that exceed more than 60 and even 70% of their base salaries. And at least a dozen of them have managed to double their salaries using just overtime, including at least two who have been able to make, somehow accrue more in overtime than they have in their salaries since working here. I think this really requires an immediate, like, an immediate step for this council to actually authorize a city auditor to take a hard look into this. This is something that's been coming up in the public eye since as far back as 2020, when the B first reported on discrepancies in overtime practices in the city. And given that we're not looking, that we're going to continue with these budget shortfalls and struggle financially, it is, you have a fiduciary duty to make sure that all of our city staff are using the limited resources we have.
Thank you for your comments. Jeffrey Tardagia is our next speaker.
Jeffrey Tardagia, again, advocate. I have now seen the report because even though I've had cataract surgery, couldn't read a darn thing on that screen. So I'm hoping that I will get contact information about this. Unfortunately, both our mayor and Mr. Parabom, my council member, is not here to answer what other questions with the homeless community and jurisdictions, because I know the Laos Project and the number of other things that don't seem to have city funds, but don't seem to have county funds, and yet they exist privately. So question mark, is there other things that are related to homeless that don't exist off of public funds? I don't know whether that's something that can be looked at as an audit, but want to be sure that indeed we know what's going on. The mayor swore that we were going to have a audit of all homeless funds, and I'm not sure that this answers what's going on, but hearing from one or two other members that this has been going on for more than a year of an audit of the homeless funds going on through there. And this is the preliminary report on one part, being completed. I'm hoping to look further and see what other information is available. As you well aware, I am very involved with the point in time count and do not want to see a repeat of what happened last year as far as in the month of January where the homeless disappeared from downtown. So hopefully, we will have something better happen December, January with the Police Department of Sacramento. That's my comment.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers. Okay, thank you so much. Mayor Protem Gara.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. One, I want to thank Farishta and her team on this. I would like to move approval of the Budget and Audit Committee recommendation and priorities. I know we, we ask a lot of the city auditor, and there are even more audits that we wish to look at, and I understand that you wanted direction on priorities. So I, again, I think we, we've tried to narrow it down and narrow down our focus and our wants, but I'd like to make sure that we get some of the, some of the stuff that's been backlogged off. And so that'll be my motion, Vice Mayor, is to move forward the Budget and Audit recommendations on prioritization.
Wonderful. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First, just really want to thank the city auditor for her leadership and also for your entire team, for all the, the work that you do. And I just also want to acknowledge that it does not go unnoticed, the amount of workload, heavy workload that we are requesting as mayor and council. And so I just, I just want to acknowledge that, and I know that there is a motion on the floor, but would like to just have a conversation. I know you have brought up the direction that I had provided in the last previous meeting, but I'm also want to be mindful of procedures in terms of mayor and council because your work plan did go to budget and audit. It was approved, and it came forth to the full city council now, today, for a vote. But I do want, just to, you know, bring this back up in particular, if it is not included in this work plan, for it to be included in next year's work plan when you bring it to budget and audit. If the Mayor Protem can include that piece, that would be really great. And I just, you know, want to speak to this in particular. You know, the city, our city, is grappling with the deficit of $44 million, and it's so important that we monitor our city's spending. And in particular, I like to bring attention to our Sacramento Police Department because they make up the largest portion of our city budget. And I believe it is incredibly important to make sure that we're monitoring their usage of overtime and vacancy. Since I've been in office, we've increased the Sacramento Police Department budget by close to 100 million, and they, again, are the largest part of our city budget. And so I know that last week, we voted to approve the police commission's work plan, and in that work plan in particular, there was several recommendation. And while there are several recommendation, there is only one that I am asking for us to consider tonight in particular. And the ask from the commission was to conduct a complete audit of SACPD's overtime policies, practices, and expenditures. And this audit could be done by the city auditor or by an outside agency. I, I am also cognizant that the city auditor has a heavy workload. And with that in mind, I know I, I have had previous conversation with the city auditor if there could be another option. And my understanding is that in previous practice, when there is internal capacity limited, we can also partner with external agency as well, and those dollars can come from that department that we're auditing. And so I just wanted to, to share that as well. And I would, you know, I don't want to make a counter motion because I don't know if I have the votes, but I'm looking at Mayor Protem right now to see if he would be okay with adding the direction that the city auditor adds that, that direction to her next year's work plan for Budget and Audit to consider for next year.
Is that a question?
That is, yeah, I'm asking you, you can add that as a direction.
And then the city, interim city manager wants to chime in.
Sure. Well, first, one, I would prob, I would say no, and I would ask actually the chair of the Budget and Audit Committee if he wishes to agendize that, then yes, because in this process, we've had to eliminate audits and include, and in fact, elevate some to make sure that we get them done. For example, we're wanting to make sure that we, we have the, even with the police department, the evidence and priority division, the military equipment and use policy. So those need to get done. We have to get through, how many total active audits do we have? Is it like?
Question, I know we had six in performance audits and I think a few, probably like a dozen, which is why we're trying to get them done without starting anything else.
Exactly, so, so, to that point, so we've got not only six, but also a dozen behind that. So to add this a year, well over a year prior, then I think the committee should have the discussion about what are they going to cut? I mean, that's, that's really the, it's not that, it's not that we shouldn't do that. I think any kind of overtime, whether it's in any department, figuring out where it's happening, where should we do it? But I don't know if adding it now for a year later to discuss is, makes our work plan any better. In fact, what we've been trying to do is make a realistic work plan so that we can actually get through the, the items that we have. And we've already said no to a number of them. So that's, that's my, my thought here. And so I know the chair is, is kicked up to speak, and I don't know if the chair has an interest in, in saying, how do we debate that? Because we've gone through to try to whittle this project down, so yeah.
I'm going to allow our interim city manager, Laney Melstein, to chime in.
Thank you. And Councilmember Gary, you said something really important about finding out where it comes from. And I just want to remind council that for the past three or four years, probably four, we have published the prior year and how overtime was spent, an in-depth analysis as part of our supplemental budget information. Last year, in addition, if you go back to item three, those were our policies. And then item 35 was last year's analysis, and we've already asked the police department to do one for now the, the most recent past year. And what I think we'll do is compile all of those together, along with the policies, along with the last prior year, so that you can see the trends on how the department is spending overtime. And you'll see that a lot of them are things like court mandated, court mandated overtime, backfill for people who are sick or on vacation, protests. When we have the big protest, the 5051 that was just there, and we had, you know, hundreds of hours of overtime, that is providing service on the street as is anticipated by our residents and our council. So that is all documented, and we will be providing that for you again. So in the end, we welcome an audit of overtime if that is something that you choose to proceed with, but we feel like we've been trying to provide you with that information, both policies and practice annually on how those dollars are spent.
I don't want to, I don't want to prejudice whether we should or shouldn't do that audit. I think the question here is, I've even said that, an audit that I've requested, I've said pull it back so that we can get through the list. So it, if it was anyone's audit here, even if anyone, I would say, let's get through the list that we have first. Sorry about that.
Yeah, so maybe a solution here is, I know that was one of the recommendations from the Police Review Commission, and so maybe those policies and how we did the analysis and the numbers on that, we can send it to the commission and maybe have ACM Mario Lara present it to the commission so that they're well aware of how it's going, because I know that's where it originated. And so we'll start there, and then in terms of next year's audit, maybe submit a proposal, and then we'll go from, unless the chair wants to, to do something, say something right now.
That, that might be an approach that works. I was also, I also noted the auditor's suggestion of bringing the issue back to the Budget and Audit Committee. I want to, I want to say I'm appreciative of the interest that Councilmember Vang has in, in doing an audit of this committee, but I, I share the concerns about the workload of, of the auditor. And I think we, at least for those of us who sit on the, on Budget and Audit Committee, we, we saw this morning how engrossing that work can be to do, to do quality audits. So we've got limited resources, we've got limited capacity, we've got, I think, as, as Mayor Protem Gara pointed out, we, we have a full plate for the, for the auditor. So I, I think adding something at, at this point into the work plan would complicate things more and, and potentially frustrate people who think that there's an audit that's going to happen, which, which doesn't happen as soon or as quickly as, as they may, may like. So whether it's go back to the commission, as the Vice Mayor has suggested, or it's make a presentation with the kind of information that the interim city manager has outlined to the Budget and Audit Committee, I think either of those approaches could work. I'm open to, to, to either of those, and I don't think that, I don't think that suggests that there's, that there's going to be an undue delay in, in taking up the, up the issue either way. In fact, I think it'll probably be, in certain respects, more timely. In fact, I think it'll probably be, in certain respects, more timely and more considered with that, one of those two approaches.
Okay. And then Councilmember Vang, do you have other comments?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm requesting it just to be considered by Budget and Audit for next year's work plan. I'm not saying we're adding it to this year's work plan. I think what's in front of us is pretty heavy workload, but asking for Budget and Audit to consider, to have that conversation when next year's work plan come to council. So, that is my request. I do think it'd be good to, you know, circle back with our police commission to, to...
You're supposed to be off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry. You know, I would like for Budget and Audit to consider it, because, again, we are in the middle of having a conversation about budget, and the police department makes up the largest piece of our budget, and they have over 100-plus vacancies, and it's really important to understand the usage of those vacancies as we're having to make tough decisions about cuts, doing potential layoffs. You know, we're going to have some tough decisions in front of us, and I want to make sure that mayor and council and the public is equipped with all the information. So, I'm asking my colleagues to consider as a direction for Budget and Audit to consider that as part of the work plan for next year, right? That conversation can happen in Budget and Audit, and maybe it comes forth, maybe it doesn't, so.
Okay, thank you so much. And then Councilmember Dickinson, you were punched up, and then she wasn't done yet, so.
Only to say that I have no objection to Budget and Audit, taking up consideration of this, and that seems to me to be a sensible approach.
Okay, wonderful. All right, so now we're good. Councilmember Garrett?
Yeah, I guess I don't disagree with that either. I just don't think it requires amending the work plan, that's all.
Okay. So, the motion stands as is, and we have a second on the motion. So, Councilmember Maple now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you, and thank you to our city auditor and your team for all the hard work. I appreciate, and I especially appreciate you cramming an hour-long briefing into 30 minutes for me because I had a really tight schedule, and it really made me appreciate the amount of work that's on your plate, because you were talking as fast as you possibly could and at a very high level, and still were barely able to get it all in. So, just want to make, hope everybody appreciates the amount of work that's on your plate and your team's plate, and especially want to appreciate you for, and your team for working with my staff on prioritizing pedestrian safety in those policy audits, because I think that's such an important thing that we obviously talk a lot about here on the council, and is obviously a big issue in our city, so I'm really appreciative of that. Also, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Vang's comments, and I think it makes a lot of sense to me that that be something that go to Budget and Audit for a conversation. You know, obviously, we're kind of, you know, into this budget process as it stands, and so it might be difficult to get that looped in this time around, but definitely I think a worthy conversation for next year. And as always, it's just to answer the question of what is it, what does it look like, do we have challenges, do we not, and is there anything that we can improve upon? And that's obviously the, that's your role in everything that we do here at the city. One of the questions I have is around our cannabis audits. So, I noticed that we currently, we have four, and one's, the work in progress is a continuous monitoring. I know that this, the one related to Measure L is in the charter, and so that's one that has to happen no matter what, makes sense. Are the rest of these ones that, are the origins of them, hey, this happened several, a few years ago, and so we've asked for this audit, and it's just in the process of being completed, or are any of them also required either by charter or some other place in our code?
For the cannabis audits?
Yeah.
Well, the one illegal cannabis cultivation that was rolled over was a request from Councilmember Geta. And then the new one that we actually prioritized above that was, you know, in discussions with the city manager's office and Office of Cannabis Management as, you know, they've identified a lot of duplication in what we do on the city level and what the state does in enforcing cannabis businesses, and, you know, doing that review of like what is duplicated and where can we kind of streamline that process. So, I thought it was a really great project that Laney brought up, and so we tried to see if we can do that first, because I really think it could free up some resources in the Office of Cannabis Management to then focus on other priority things, such as like cannabis lounges and other things you guys want to do in that office.
That's really helpful. I just, I was just curious, because I noticed it's a lot of work related to that policy area, so I just want to make sure you understood what was required, what was it. I actually, I very much support the comparative analysis, as I've probably made it really clear to my colleagues and the public. I think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to align ourselves with state law, and thus making it easier for our staff and us to do what we need to do. And so, okay, I really appreciate that. And pedestrian safety, and then, of course, appreciate the work on homelessness. I can't remember who made the comment, but it was, hey, you know, that when we add new things, there's rightfully the public is then saying, hey, why is it taking so long? And I, first thing comes to mind is homelessness, and I've received no less than a handful of emails, even in a short period of time, about where are we at on this? And so, I think that one's a really key one that people are interested in. But of course, we're always operating within, how much time do we have, how much people capacity do we have to actually do the work that's in front of us? And that's just a real constraint. And so, I really appreciate the prioritization of those things, and hoping that, as Councilmember Garrett said, that we can move the things forward and hopefully off your plate and diminish that workload, and so you can focus your energy on the things that are forthcoming, and then possibly, I'm sure, as we always do, there will be things that come up that are, that become priorities to this council and making sure that you have the space for that too. So, just thank you, thank you for all the work, and I think it's a great plan.
Wonderful. And Mayor McCarty?
Yes, thank you. Just a few things. To add, one, I just want to thank Farishta, this is our first chance as mayor to see the presentation and your work plan. So, of course, these audits focus on our policy programs, but as I stated earlier, you know, we, every penny we save in an audit and a performance audit helps us address issues down the road, so thank you. I did want to say two specific things. One, thank you for working with us to add the homeless part two. Homeless part one, understanding is the hotel motel program, and part two is more of a performance evaluation on the shelter programs we have throughout the city of Sacramento and some of the groups that we fund to help provide those programs, to help us understand which ones provide us the most dividends. I know an audit's going to take several months, if not a year. We're going to have some discussion on this next Tuesday night, but this will certainly help us in the out years. And I also want to address Councilmember Vang's issue, and I did, this came up a couple weeks ago, and I asked the auditor in conjunction with our audit chair to really take a look at this issue, because on every Tuesday night, somebody could have an audit issue or suggestion, rightfully so. And so, we could have two for each of us, and that's 18 issues, and I don't think it makes sense to put it on the audit plan, per se, and then what do you take off? And so, I thought a better process is to bring the suggestion of a new audit to the committee and evaluate it in conjunction with how does this fit into the work plan? Because you only have so much work to do, you only have so many auditors, so putting something on is just like a plate, you have to take something off. And so, I think we need to look at those in totality, because in and of itself, all these ideas, if you ask our constituents, you want to audit this program, that program, that program, oh, yeah, that sounds good, but there's no free lunch in making these choices. So, I think that's important, so I just want to allude to that. And, yeah, I think that is an issue that I'll have deference to the audit committee to look at that, but compare that to all the other issues we want to address as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, today at Budget and Audit, we heard about, from the ethics report that you did, animal care, well-being, and we just had so many reports, and it was all coming, so, I mean, just kudos on finishing that. And I agree with Mayor McCarty, I mean, homelessness for me is front, mind, and center. I mean, everyone wants to know where the money is going, because the problem is there, and it's, people see it, and people feel it, so homelessness continues to be my priority in terms of your work plan. And then you did mention you have a vacancy in your office. Which audit was that, that you were, that that person would have to work on, or what was it?
Well, yeah, we have the principal fiscal policy analyst, it's the division manager over the performance audits division. We don't have an audit assigned to that person at the moment. We could either pick up one that we're, we have on hold or start a new project, but we'd have to...
And how many people are on your team, again?
We have nine at the moment, and we have the one vacant position.
Okay. And then Councilmember Garrett, is it okay for your motion in terms of direction to have Farishta, our city auditor, make sure she fills that position, otherwise we're going to be down an auditor?
Well, yes, I mean, I think that was a directive we had given prior already to fill that vacancy.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. So, you got clear direction to make sure you fill it so that we can complete these audits. These audits are important to the people of Sacramento, the taxpayer dollars, and making sure that we're using them effectively, and if there's any efficiencies that we can do, we need to implement them and be able to move forward, so.
The other piece with that is that when we have to contract out, some of them might be appropriate, but the contracting out, I think in the long run, is a higher cost for us, so.
Yeah, I agree. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second to move forward with the city auditor's work plan right now, and then the police overtime issue would be sent to Budget and Audit to discuss what would, you know, what the plan is for next year. And then, city staff will be going to the Police Review Commission to talk about the policies and the overtime usage, and so, they're already on it.
All right, and just to clarify, it's going to be coming to Budget and Audit when we do our process next year for our work plan? Okay.
For next year. And the chair will have a conversation about how we're going to move forward with any ask that comes. So, say that, I mean, the pedestrian audit, or say I want to do a North Gate audit, how are we going to go about balancing that so we're not throwing you a million things and you can't accomplish them, and we focus on what's most important at that time? So, we're going to have a conversation about how we throw that out there.
Yeah, I think I have some ideas on that for next year.
Okay, well, we welcome all ideas, please meet with the chair so that we can move forward on a process that works for everybody.
Vice Mayor, can I, because I'm not in Budget and Audit, just something, can I also add just something real quick? It's not part of the motion, but just given the amount of workload that you have and the various priorities, obviously, you know, majority council, you can count to five votes, but like Mayor Pro Tem have shared, that there are perhaps other audits that, you know, are just as important, and you have to choose, you know, which audit takes precedence. I would love to just have an understanding that if internally we don't have the capacity, what is, what does the cost look like to do those audits if we were to, you know, contract with an agency and to support you? Because I know you would do the oversight of that, but I think it's important for us to have that option or to have, to be able to share that with Budget and Audit so that they can see, because I know that you do that for other audits as well, right? So, if it costs less to actually, for example, do the over, the usage of overtime for the PD department, I think it's important for the public to know what that cost would be. So, just wanted to just share that as well for the Budget and Audit Committee to consider if they so choose want to, they want to see what that cost is. I think that's important. So, just wanted to just put that out there, so, yeah.
Okay, well, Chair Dickinson will be tasked with figuring out how we put the different audits that are requested from council members on the plate and see what we have to take out in order to be able to complete it. So, all right, please call a roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan is absent. Councilmember Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckebom is absent. Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Yes.
And Mayor McCarty?
Aye.
Measure passes.
Great, thank you.
Wonderful. All right, and moving along to item number 13. And we will probably, Councilmember Jennings, did you want to kick it off, or are you good?
Sure. So, we're going to have a presentation tonight on the salary range adjustment that we're going to talk about tonight, and this will allow for the advertising for the position as we move forward in advertising for our city manager position. And then we will come back on May the 20th to report out on community engagement, marketing materials, as well as total compensation. So, Jennifer? No? Okay. Jennifer Wilkinson?
Good evening. As again, I'm Jennifer Wilkinson, I'm in the Human Resources Department. And as you're aware, CPSHR was selected for the city manager recruitment, and as part of that recruitment process, they completed the salary survey, and at the March 25th meeting, city council meeting, they presented the salary survey results and recommended adjusting the salary range to 273,211 to 420,684 annually. On April 1st, the Personnel and Public Employee Committee was presented with a proposal to adjust the city manager salary range as recommended by CPSHR, and passed a motion recommending to the city council approval of the salary range and the approval of the adjusted salary range by city councils required before we can go ahead and advertise for the city manager recruitment position. And then lastly, I'll just like to state for the record that this item is listed as a discussion item, because Government Code 54953 requires that we must orally report a summary of the recommendation for final action on salaries and salary schedules or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits for a local agency executive. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions?
Okay. We will do public comment first, and then council comments. Vice Mayor, I just have one speaker on the side, and McWorthy?
You know, I don't, why, why are we rushing to make decisions on city managers' finances when the corruption is here? That should be the investigation, who broke the Brown Act? Is it a felony? Or is the city manager required to apply alone? That ain't been said yet. You know, this is why I said Dixon early to you, and I said to the mayor, when a person have violated the Brown Act, they cannot make decisions on this table, on this podium, period. When you are under investigation, or should be under investigation, not just Chan, you should be under investigation too. The Black Chamber should be under investigation, of how that money went out. You ain't going to get nothing done here by bypassing this and one person doing this. Help this woman name the audit, whether it's policy or whether it's finance, you'll get further. I took account of it. I have a business law. You got to able to identify what you're looking for. It's policy problems, and you have a hell of a policy problem here in this administration, and finance. And as long as you ain't cleared that up, it going to get worse here. It going to get worse. And you got to, that's when I say, I got to stick with Trump. Trump's a mastermind in business. A lot of things that I'm going to say to his force when I get personal person to them, but he going to have to bend some things here to force this state, this state went to sanctuary state. There's some constitutionality should be talked about. What is the sanctuary state required to get from the government, or what it shouldn't be getting from the government? All this thing about, oh, he got...
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item. Thank you so much. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a quick question, and mostly for clarification for the public. When we, when we pass a range for this position, what we're, what we're talking about here is, it doesn't necessarily mean that whoever ultimately gets selected for this role is going to either come in at the lowest or the highest. What it means is that this is the range that we are required by law to publish in advance, so those applicants know what to expect within a range. And then, based on their experience and their negotiations and qualifications and everything else, then a salary will be selected within that range by this body.
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure that that's really clear for folks, because like, some folks might see this and see this, let's say, the high dollar amount, and be like, oh, my God, you know, and so I think it's, you know, it's important to recognize that it's a range, just like anything else. We have ranges for the positions in our offices and basically every position in the city of Sacramento. That's correct, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Garrett?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I wanted to highlight that issue as well. Although, you know, I do think that, that the, that the range, and I appreciate the work that was done in the study and salary survey, and I wonder why the, why the recommendation of the range, unless I'm understanding it differently, didn't, didn't even come at least maybe closer to an organization like the county of Sacramento where it has this, the same, an organization that has, that's somewhat of a, of a large entity. It isn't a full-service, say, entity where they run the law enforcement and fire, they have those separately, but the complexities of the county system as well are significant, but yet our numbers are much higher than are recommended. So, I guess I, I want to understand the, how to make a relevant comparison. And I do recognize that, you know, some cities are full-service cities and some are not full-service cities, and, you know, clearly, I think one, you know, for example, Ranch Cordova, they, they're a contract city, right? So, and even some of our other cities don't even have parks departments, they have a special... They have a special district that manages all of that. So, and so I understand those issues. But can maybe talk through a little bit about the high end? Because the fact is, the public is concerned about the high end of the range.
Sure. Well, in the study that CPS HR provided, the range that they, sorry, in the, it's one of the, it's attachment to, to the council report tonight. On the last page of their recommendation, they provided the cost of living adjustment for the salary, for the base salaries. And so the recommendation that they provided is the average, or sorry, the, in that, sorry, the last page, that is the average of all the cities that were included in the, as a comparable. And so the recommendation for the salary that they provided is based on just the base salary. And the standard process for the city is to be within five, above or below the average. So their recommendation to increase the top rate by 5% would put us within that 5% variance within the top range.
Thank you. Any other questions? Good. Seeing no one else to punch up to speak, I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion. Move the staff recommendation.
Second, okay, wonderful. We have a motion by Councilmember Jennings and a second by Councilmember Dickinson. Please call a roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan is absent. Councilmember Dickinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pluckebom is absent. Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Let's see, Vice Mayor Talamontes?
Aye.
And Mayor McCarty?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And this concludes the items for today. We are moving along to council comments, questions, ideas. And then a public comment. We have 10 speakers lined up to speak. So Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to mention a few things that it's getting to be a busy time of year, I think, everywhere. But speaking of the recruitment of the city manager, there's a forum tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the Higginwood Community Center. So I think there are four of them scheduled around the city, but we're pleased to host one in North Sacramento. And coming up this weekend, the Wood Lake Garden Club is having its annual plant sale from 10 to noon on Saturday at the Wood Lake Swim Club. This is for all you gardeners out there, this is a great opportunity to get new and exotic and different plants. And it's a great time to catch up with friends, too. Also on Saturday, we've got a community cleanup at Higginwood Community Park from 11 to 1:00. So come on out and join us for that. On Sunday, it's, of course, Earth Day at South Side Park. So that's, that's most of the day for those of you who want to join those festivities. We also have a spring on the Boulevard, on Del Paso Boulevard, from noon to 4:00 with all kinds of bands and food and just fun. A storytelling corner, all kinds of good things. And then Sunday evening are the SEVA Awards at Hiram Johnson High School. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to attend the SEVA Awards in the past. These are the high school students that produce videos. And then they enter them for awards. It's really a very fun occasion. And the students are so creative. It's really quite amazing. So that's, as I mentioned, at Hiram Johnson High School, beginning, I believe, at 5:30 on Sunday, on Sunday evening. So there's lots to do, lots of good things out there.
Sounds like a lovely time. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to announce a few events happening in South Sacramento District 8. This Saturday at Luther Burbank is the Fourth Annual Autism Event happening. I think several of you are also co-sponsor of this event. It's happening this Saturday from 11 to 4:00. There's going to be resources for families and just really come and join us and celebrate our families and also amazing artists on the autism spectrum. And then, as you all know, we are currently conducting various listening session for the recruitment of our city manager. There's been various listening session happening throughout the city of Sacramento. And in particular, this Saturday, after you go to the autism event, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Pennell Community Center, will be a listening session regarding the qualities that you want to see in our next city manager. So really encouraging folks to come out to that. And then annually, I also have an annual Heart and Hustle Scholarship, dollars that I fundraise to provide scholarship for our high school students who live or go to school in District 8. And so letting you know that that is currently open. Students can apply at heartandhustle.org backslash scholarship 2025. And we usually have a prompt and you just answer it. And you could use those dollars to pursue higher education or vocational training. And then lastly, we are really excited to relaunch our Metavee Certified Farmer's Market. And this Wednesday in particular, we are canvassing the Metavee neighborhood. We have 5,000 door hangers because even though I am your elected official and we can send out newsletter, we often still miss people. And so back to organizing one-on-one, my team and I are going to be out putting door hangers on 5,000 households. If you want to join us, let me know as well. You can go to heartandhustle.org backslash mcfm-doorhanger. And we're going to have lots of volunteers and want to make sure we get the word out about that. Those are my updates.
Love it. Farmer's Market sounds nice. And getting your steps in, go join Councilmember Vang. It's a nice day. Okay, moving along. Councilmember Maple?
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say we'll be welcoming our mayor, Kevin McCarty, for the, another stop on his tour. I always like to announce them because we're so excited that you come to the neighborhood. So this will be at Hollywood Park at Two Rivers Cider on Wednesday, April 23rd at 6:00 PM. So this coming, that's tomorrow. This, this tomorrow, at 6:00 PM. Come join us at Two Rivers. We'll be really excited to see you there, to hear from you, and also to hear from the neighbors. And just want to really thank you for your work doing this tour, this listening tour over the last 100 days. Are you getting close to 100 days?
I think this is our final stop of the tour. We're going to have t-shirts printing, like stops for the tour. And this is the final event. And it's the only event where you could have an adult beverage during, during the presentation, so lively event.
The song that came to mind was, "It's the final count." Anyway.
Yes.
So please join us there. That sounds amazing. I'm looking forward to a t-shirt. And then I will be, I wanted to also let folks know about our city manager recruitment process. Town Hall, as Councilmember Vang mentioned, these are happening throughout the city. We are having one at the Oak Park Community Center. That is at 3425 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And that is going to be on the 29th, so on next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So I hope that you'll join us there, learn more about the process and give your input about what you're looking for in your next city manager. Thank you.
Wonderful. It's like the Eras Tour, but the Mayor McCarty Tour. So it's kind of what it is. All right. Mayor Protam Guerra?
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, one, I wanted to just inform the council that over the holiday, you know, I, I think about, you know, the Easter season or Easter time as a new beginning and a turbulent time. And so over the holiday, I sent also a letter to Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Serna, about some of our discussions that we've had here and the request for us to meet jointly as a city and a county and requested specifically that that be done and agendized. And, you know, the day after Easter, I always say it's a, it's a new beginning. He responded promptly and is already going to be working with, we'll be following up with the mayor, but he's already directed the board clerk and also the board CEO to work with the mayor on how we can do this. I was, I was inspired by his response because while I was asking for a meeting specifically for our body and the county, he did mention something that my colleagues have brought up, which is, is looking at the stronger engagement with other city jurisdictions. And so in his response, you know, Chair Serna has, has said that he will also be reaching out to the other mayors of the other cities to engage in this joint conversation and to really not only talk about homelessness, but also housing as it affects with our SHRA agency and making sure that we're looking at this more of a, as a county, county piece. So, you know, for those that, that celebrate Easter, you know, I always, I believe that this is a time where we see optimism and a new beginning. And with that, I know he'll be following up with the mayor specifically on this issue. And I look forward to a positive, a positive new step forward, so.
Love it.
Vice Mayor, if I may chime in, Mayor Protam Guerra, I have already spoken with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, Flo Evans, and we have a meeting on Thursday to start planning on your behalf.
Clerk to clerk. I like that.
Love the work. And then I have an event, Jump in the Spring at Niños Park on Saturday. Come, jump houses, free hot dogs, whole all hot dogs, and just a lot of fun. So please join us. All right, and moving on to the public comment.
Vice Mayor, I have 10 speakers. I'll call off a few names. John Fiero, McWorthy, Larry Brock, then Mary Tappel.
Hi, my name is John Fiero. I'm District 2. I guess we forgot to mention that we were awarded a couple million dollars with the grants today, or apparently, for renovation in North Sacramento. Rogers was the champion of that. I'm surprised we didn't get a mention about it. I've been a resident of, actually, I've been protecting and protecting property and serving the public for Sacramento for 30 years. I spent 30 years with the fire department. I was given the city's highest award, the Medal of Valor. I live in the city. I pay taxes in the city. I bought a house in the city. I spend my money in the city. I'm the epitome of a firefighter that you'd want to keep in the city. The rest of them live way out of town. I retired and I bought a restaurant on Del Paso Boulevard, Little Joe's Restaurant. It was a losing bid, a losing proposition. No one would buy it. I sacrificed my time. I haven't paid myself rent for the building. It's been a huge sacrifice. And it's, but it's become a little jewel of North Sac. It's serving the public and people really like it. Well, we just had a grant program and Little Joe's was denied. I don't know why. I'm the only public bathroom. I've asked for money for toilet paper, from discretionary funds, from my city council person. I get nothing. I have no sinks. I have floors in the back that need repairing. The plumbing is shot. I'm not asking for re-renovation, bringing new people in. I'm just asking to keep this community asset open. I, I'm really disappointed. You know, I've tried really hard. This is something that no one would go in and take on that I know of. And business proposition, you couldn't find partners to get together on the money that this made. This is really bad. I mean, they, they, $5 million worth of ARP funds and Little Joe's has gotten nothing at all. And we're the center of North Sacramento. That was, that wasn't good at all. Thank you.
Give your comments. McWorthy?
People be careful what you ask in the community for. Did you take a survey on how many people in your community, in your district, worked on a manager of an organization? Just think about it. How many people that worked on a manager made the decision and sent it down to them? These are the things that you can make out. I'm going to still laugh. I'll be over there and listen tomorrow. Because I, I just don't understand why are you disadvantaging the people the way you are disadvantaging them for years here? And when you, as the audit person mentioned, a whistleblower in one part and the other part don't have, somebody been stealing money. Audit must be identified by name before it be audit, whether it's finance or policy. You put them both together, you never find the thief because one will come up for the other one. And you got to look at this. And McCarty, you're going to suffer the consequence down the line. Because if this woman go to court, it's going to pop back on you. How can a criminal make decision here and all they don't know is where is the top person that she was working on? Guilty by participation, right there. Actually, I want to see your staff. I want to see the staff of each city council under oath of some policy they've been studying. Well, tell you a lot.
Thank you for your comments. Larry C. Bracco?
Hello, thank you for letting me come up. I'm having an issue with the city right now over some property I have at 460 Garden Highway. And they took my road away here because Safka was, Safka was doing levy work. So I complied with them and I had to move stuff off the property at 460 and move it on my half acre. And so then after this happens, they come up with the empty program for vacant lots. You can't have anything on a vacant lot. Okay, so now I'm paying fines to the city about this and I talked to them about it. So I'm paying one fine to code enforcement. And I keep telling my, I complied with Safka to make everything work for them. And so now I have a problem with the city code enforcement on my issue. And I just sort of think it's a little unfair. And I just was wanting to know, I'm trying to combine the one lot with the other lot so I don't have the issue with the vacant lot program, so.
So Michael Jasso in the back, Assistant City Manager, can help with the lot issue. And in terms of Safka, I'm your council member, and so I have your contact information now and we'll follow up to.
Okay, I appreciate that. And also District 2, I have a house on Elmani and Dale. And they cited me for that because the tenants had things in their backyard, which they did get rid of. And then the last comment was, which I couldn't understand. Certain things they said were right and the people had too many refrigerators in the backyard, which they removed. But then they said they couldn't have cer, they had like a weightlifting gym to work out in the backyard.
Thank you for your comments, but your time is complete.
So I told them to put them in, in the shed or the little garage. And then I got $5920 for that, which I paid to compensate, but.
Well, you came to the right place. And so we'll follow up with Michael Jasso on the concern of your lot. Safka, that'd be me.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
And then we'll also follow up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Tappel.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Tappel, then Sharon Jackson?
Mayor and city council members, thank you so much for another, yet another opportunity to address you. I want to speak again about the continuing need for looking after the, the public safety and public health concerns along the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail. There was an enormous cleanup last year, very successful. The city, city managers, city staff, a whole lot of people on the council supporting it and everything. And we just need to keep it up because we have, unfortunately, when camper, illegal entrenched campers are being removed from our Lower Arcade Creek, they're going, a bunch of them, right back to the bike trail. And it's simply that our park safety rangers are just immediately citing them. They're having to keep this up. I want you to stay aware of it. It's so, those gains that we had, enormous gains that we had last year can't be maintained with the city going into, being in a deficit this year without this continuous nipping it all in the bud. So you need to understand that residents who are involved, like I was, along with a whole lot of other people in North Sacramento, involved in the bike trail cleanup, we saw that it was needing to get constantly maintained. The entrenched encampments were so large for so long along the bike trail that people still think of it as an area where you can go try to camp again. And unfortunately, they come right back when they're moved from adjacent places. So any new proposals for homeless sheltering in the D2 area, we're just highly worried about all of those causing more people yet to come back to the areas that we all gave up so much and so much of public budget that we don't have this year to get that cleaned up. That we just can't afford to be other than very, very protective. very protective of the bike trail safety. But thank you very much for staying aware of this issue.
Thank you for your comments. Sharon Jackson, then Nancy Azavito. I don't see Sharon. And then Nancy Azavito. And then following Nancy is someone about D2 housing and email is CJ Photography.
Okay. Good evening. What I'm here tonight to speak about is something that's coming up on the agenda next week. But I just wanted to get a jump on it. I'm here to talk about a proposed building of 100 units, 100 shelter, homeless shelter units, basically on, along the bike trail again. As Mary talked about, there's been so much stuff going on the bike trail, has been for several years. And we've worked real hard along with the city to try to keep it clean. And we are really concerned about this one. There's 100 units that they're proposing, and we think that's too many. We think that what they're proposing looks very nice. But I think we all know in District Two that District Two usually ends up with short end of the stick. And what they're proposing is not going to be what comes to fruition. So that is a big concern for us. A lot of the people, myself included, have homeless, homelessness PTSD along the bike trail. I literally lived with homeless in my front yard for a couple of years. And it's not something I want to revisit by any means. And I think that bringing this new facility to our district is going to promote that again. You guys can call it what you like, but we call it a bad idea. And we still want to say, why don't we use that 102 acres in South Sacramento, the one that was bought initially for the homeless situation? That's still available. Nothing's been done with it. So we're asking you, please, don't let D2 be a guinea pig for this new project that they want to bring up, the housing, the housing project they're calling it. And if it's successful somewhere else, by all means, then we'll look at it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I have four more speakers. The first CJ Photography email.
Christine Jefferson.
Perfect. And then Sheri Martinez.
So I'm Christine Jefferson. I'm in D2. And I, too, want to talk about the, it's coming on the agenda next week, too. It's the 100 units that's coming in. Been talking to my neighbors. And a lot of my neighbors is not really wanting that 100 unit because the city has a way in D2 of doing kind of a bait and switch. They'll tell us one thing, and then when they actually do it, it's something else. I mean, we got Camp Resolution to look at. That was a disaster. The rail yard, that was a disaster. And we have limited resources. You guys have limited resources. When, it's easier to fix something that's not there than to fix something that's there and it's a big junky mess. I asked a question to the developer when he came, how much stuff are you going to let these people bring when they come into these tiny houses? He couldn't answer that. Is this just going to be one big camp resolution where we have stuff everywhere on Realinda Boulevard, 100 units? That's too many. We got, we're mixing elders. I, I'm all for housing, believe me. I want us to find some housing for our folks. Elders, vets, and then some homeless. The homeless that are there, the elders I can see, they're kind of helpless, you know, maybe in wheelchairs sickly. The vets, probably the same. But when you mix the other homeless people in with that, I have this thing of them maybe taking over that whole community in that little bitty section. I'm, that's me imagining it. I, I, I'm not saying it's going to happen. But we're setting our homeless in our community up to fail. We are a food desert. Where are these people going to get food? Where, I mean, we, it's so much we don't have. There's too many people in one place. And I just, I'm not for it. So, thank you.
Your comments. Sheri Martinez, Jeffrey Tardaglia, then Fletcher Legardi.
Hello, Sheri Martinez. I would like to second what my fellow community leaders are saying about possibly bringing in another camp resolution. Since camp resolution has been gone, I've been seeing a lot of more activity on the bike trail. Actually, people walking and riding bikes and utilizing the bike trail as it should be. I feel like that would kind of do damage to what we have already done, like with the D2 Bike Fest. It's nice that we have, over the Pike Bridge, that rubbish and stuff there got cleared up. So now hopefully next D2 Bike Fest, we can venture off into downtown. So yes, I second my community leaders with that. Another thing was, I came in in May and spoke about being assaulted, vehicular assault and hit and run by Caleb Taubman. I came in again September and spoke again. And Ryan from Katie Maple's office spoke to me and he said that your officer, the office would be willing to write a letter. And October 22nd, he said it was getting ready for submission. And I've since written him a couple emails and I'm not getting any responses. I volunteered the River City Rodaway Alliance. My friend Margarita brought up his name. And I thought, oh, maybe he doesn't work in the office anymore. So he still does. So maybe I'd just like to refresh everyone's minds that I'm still here. And I'll send out another email. And Isaac Gonzalez from Slow Down Sacramento wrote a letter for me. So I'm just looking again for more support in my fight for justice. Thank you.
I'm just really quick. I'm sorry about that. I'll follow up with him and figure out what happened. Okay? Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeffrey, then Fletcher Legardi will be our final speaker.
Well, Jeff Tardaglia. And this week has all started at 8 o'clock in the morning with the state and other issues. Homeless was one. Disability was another. Tomorrow will be housing and AJE3. But for our three members of City Hall that are part of regional transit, you did not mention any regard that today was Earth Day. Roger, I thank you for bringing that for Ecos, next Sunday is an Earth Day. There are other things that guys, you should be involved with and you should be supporting and doing. For Mr. Jennings, I hope that you explain what is going on for the homeless with over there at the, what is that? Underneath, not underneath the freeway, but the, what is that damn street there, 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 that has collected a lot of people through there? But anyway, I haven't heard an explanation of how RT is directing or handling that since supposedly it's been started and how many people are there. I appreciated some time ago when you held the thing explaining what was going on with our refugees and how that is now an issue and a problem for our community. To Mr. Kevin McCarty, I thank you that today at 2:00, first time I've seen where it's, matters not on the agenda, on the 2:00 meeting. I'm not certain the significance and reason for that, but I appreciate it. I appreciate when you get this item moved to not be the last item on the agenda because this is a Daryl Steinberg thing. And you've seen how much is already in four months been missed by having it the last item on the agenda. I have other meetings to attend to.
If your comments, your time is complete. Fletcher Legardi is our final speaker this evening.
Closed. City Council, Mayor. My name is Fletcher Sherman Legardi. I've been there for you from the beginning of me moving to this town. So the last city council meeting I came to was February 15th, 2020. And at that meeting, the chief of police came to this lectern and he said that he was not ready for anything new to happen in this city. So I made sure that what he asked for that day, that I brought to this city for you guys to use. If anyone in this room knows me, I'm, I'm your secret weapon. And I'm proud to stand here and tell you that. And I'm looking forward to do something with you. Even though I brought this case for you to look at, it's not against you, it's with us. Have a good day, guys.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. And that concludes speakers. Okay. And then I did grow up Catholic, so I like to adjourn the meeting today in honor of Pope Francis of the Catholic Church who passed away. And that concludes the meeting at 7:29 PM. Thank you.